I'd just like to welcome everybody here to the regular September school committee meeting of the Abington School Committee. If you could please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I should also add, it's Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the Middle High School Library. Before we get started, I just want to introduce our new student representative for this school year, Andrew Van Luling, senior at Abington High School. Andrew, thank you very much. Welcome aboard.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Andrew Van Luling. Thank you, and I'm very excited to work with everyone.
If you have any, if there's a moment where you want to inject something for, like, student perspective, just feel free, okay?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. First up, hearing of visitors, if anybody would like to address the committee on any matter, if they could just come to the podium and state their name and address, please.
Hi there. Mike McDonald, Three Pine Crest Road in Abington. I'm here to address, you know, I'm asking the committee and the school to consider prayer in school. I, you know, for the last five years, I think, you know, we can see that the struggles and the, you know, kind of in the pain that children have been going through, and I think, you know, we've moved away so far away. I mean, just, I think, last year, we canceled Good Friday Day Off, you know, and, you know, I don't, I think that the children are, the kids are really in need of, you know, Christian prayer in school. A relationship, study after study, shows that the personal relationship with God, what it does to them, you know, so I, you know, I think that it's going such the other way, as I mentioned, on, you know, kind of, you know, getting rid of Good Friday, but also, you know, I look down and I see, you know, our kids, you know, we're putting yoga in schools, right? So, you know, that, you know, is a form of prayer. It's Hindu, it's Buddhist, right? So...
It's part of our curriculum.
No, no, it isn't. No, it isn't.
Mr. McDonald, this is our meeting. Please don't interrupt when I'm trying to explain.
Okay. Okay, well, you interrupt me.
It's part of our curriculum. It's our meeting. It's part of our curriculum, okay?
Right, but it is, it is, it is, if you, if you look at it, if you know about it, you know it's Hindu and Buddhist, right? So, so, that's, that's what I'm saying, right? So, we've substituted that, right? So, it's part of the curriculum, but we could substitute prayer just as, just as, just as much in the homeroom, right? So, we do the pledge of allegiance to the flag, one nation under God. We give our, we give our children a chance to have a relationship with God. I don't think it's far-fetched. You know, you, you put that in your curriculum, why can't we do that? That's, that's my, that's my request, for the good of the kids, I guess, and I'm gonna leave it here, you know, again, study after study show what prayer does to our children. We know this, so, so if we, if we don't do it, if we don't look into it, right, then, and, you know, that's a problem. So, I, I think, I think we need to look into it.
Okay.
And that's, that's my request.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Anybody else like to speak to the committee? Okay, moving on, we're going to have the reading and approval of records from the August 26th school committee meeting, the day before school started. After, get, the committee gets a chance to review it, I'll just be looking for a motion to approve in a second or amend if there's any amendments that are needed. I'll make the motion to approve. There's a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Up next, Department Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Vasta. Yeah, go ahead.
Just for the community's awareness, MCAS data has been released by the state. There was a plan by DESI to have a parent portal where families could access their students' results online. That was supposed to go live tomorrow. They put a halt on that based on some security, data security concerns, so instead, families will be receiving MCAS results, reports, the way they have in the past. They'll come in the mail over the next, probably, week to two and a half weeks.
Okay, thank you. Do you want me to just... So, for our department update, our department head update is going to be Ms. Michelle Poyer, the director of art, so you can please come up. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michelle Poyer, director of the art department, so I just wanted to fill you in on some of the goals our department has for this upcoming school year. We have curriculum goals and department goals, so our curriculum, according to, like, the curriculum plan this year, we're on the designing phase, and kind of just looking at our curriculum K through 12, identifying any gaps that we have related to the Mass State frameworks. So, the four main standards that we go by are creating art, presenting, responding, and connecting, and so we, each year, we kind of pick one to focus on, and kind of making sure that we're aligning those to our curriculum. So, a professional goal of mine is also to kind of attend any, you know, conferences or workshops, or seek outside professional development on best practices and how to incorporate, you know, new ideas into our curriculum as well, and how to incorporate that into our curriculum. For our department goals, we're focusing on the standard of responding to artwork, so responding to the context of artwork of our peers and of masters, so basically, you know, hanging artwork up on the wall, and how do you have kids have an authentic conversation about that artwork with each other, and kind of, you know, a very, a less formal way than, you know, if it were writing about it, kind of more conversational. So, we're kind of focusing on these questions to ask your students about observation, about observing the process of the artwork, how to interpret meaning behind it, and offering constructive feedback. So, you know, throughout the year, we're gonna try to incorporate these kind of conversation starters with our students, so that we kind of get those conversations going on how to talk about and respond to artwork within our departments. And it'll look different throughout, you know, different grade levels, but that's kind of our focus this year. That ties into the strategic plan of having students think critically and creatively, having them communicate effectively, so by using these visual thinking strategies, it helps them think on a different level of just creating the artwork, and try to understand how other students create their artwork and what their thought process is behind it. Upcoming for the department, we have two big art shows towards the end of the year, Youth Art Month, that we do at the public library, grades K through 4, which is in March, and then Celebrate the Arts, which is grades 5 through 12, that we have here at the middle school and the high school. Both shows have been, you know, really well attended the last, last few years, so we want to keep that going and showcase all the students' artwork throughout the district. Couple of areas of concern that we've had for the couple of years, so at the Woodsdale, we were teaching art on the stage, and so just kind of, if we could, you know, considering having a dedicated classroom for art students that, you know, serves all students in the school, because though Ms. Kotor is making it work really well, it is still a challenge to have an art class on a stage in, like, a public setting with distractions and, you know, not having sinks and proper technology and things like that, though she has definitely made it more of a home the last couple of years. Second, and, you know, it's just kind of a point of concern, not, I don't know that we can do much about it, but the shared staff position of the middle and high school part-time teacher is, we've had kind of a high turnover, three teachers in the last three years. It's a demanding role in some middle school and high school, two different subjects, digital art and art for grade six, and it just, you know, it's a, it's a point to bring up that it is kind of a difficult position to fill. So, those are our two things that were kind of, you know, the two challenges that we face in our department. That's it. If we have any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Michelle?
More comment than a question.
Yep.
Glad that you have the dates for Youth Art Month, and specifically Celebrate the Arts, because that is one day, and I never get to tell you in public, because you're here early in the year, and that doesn't happen until the end, just how amazing of an event particularly Celebrates the Art is. I would love to see more people come out from the community to see it, just because the level of tremendous talent that is displayed in these halls, it's, it's mind-blowing, and the students do tremendous work, but they also have tremendous teachers at the helm, so I hope everyone gets to come out and we'll talk about it, but just to be able to publicly say, "Well done." Thank you to you guys, to your team, and to the students for creating something amazing every year.
Thank you.
I'll just piggyback on that, if I could. I think getting the younger students to come to that Celebrate the Art, even though it's not their artwork, it's a glimpse into, their art is short periods, once a week, they don't get the same glimpse that a high school kid does, and they don't, may not be able to see what the future of art looks like for them, but to see the outcome of all different types of medium, in, media, whatever that word is, downstairs, is just unbelievable, especially at the high school level, when you have, like, pottery and all that. If we can encourage the younger kids to come too, to see what the future of art looks like, I think that'd be fantastic.
Sure, yeah, that's a good idea.
And how has enrollment been? Because I know the output, the product is fantastic. Do you still have a healthy enrollment? Do you see any trends there?
Yeah, it was trending up. There was a, less students this year, there was a little dip in the enrollment, but I think there's also, the classes were a little bit smaller. I know the freshman class right now is a little bit smaller than the years prior. The digital art class, because it's been a different teacher every year, and a split teacher in the advanced classes, we didn't have, like, digital art, the advanced students come back, because there wasn't a spot to have them with staffing, so I think the digital art program is a little bumpy right now, but for drawing, painting, and sculpture, steady numbers there.
Great, thank you.
Quick question. I feel bad, because I've never been able to attend the high school or the Celebrates the Arts. Is it possible to do it for more than one day?
The middle school stays up for a few days, so those are hanging by the, by the classrooms. The problem with the high school art is that it's sculpture, and it's on science tables in the hallway, so the sculpture comes in and out just for the night. We've left the paintings and drawings up, but they fall down throughout the day, because middle schoolers go into, like, music class and gym, so sometimes they kind of fall down, and they're, you know, kids touch them too, and so the walls get a little dirty too, so the, the high school one isn't super sustainable for more than, more than one day.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks, Mrs. Poyer. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Really quick, really quick, I'm just gonna jump out of order, because I think it makes sense based on what's coming up next for the principals' report. We're gonna skip ahead to the first item under Dr. Michelle's agenda for the proposed language to update the field trip policy.
Thank you. I would have Mr. Bourne come up, but I think it's pretty straightforward. We are asking the committee to consider updating our international field trip language to include 10th graders or sophomores to attend international field trips, and in the memo from, from Mr. Bourne, I think the really important two pieces is that it's the second half of their sophomore year, so students have acclimated and connected to the culture and expectations of the school, and second, it would not replace any policies, or, sorry, practices that the high school has in reviewing each trip's applicant for eligibility and suitability. So, those things would stay in place, but it's adding 10th graders an option to, to attend an international trip. We, I'll also add that both Mr. Bourne and I reached out to neighboring communities, and a great majority of our neighboring communities do allow 10th graders to attend international trips.
Heidi and I talked about it in, like, subcommittee, and that was kind of one of our questions, and aside from that, I mean, I think if the parent feels comfortable, and as Mr. Bourne said, it's the second part of sophomore year, and if it makes it easier to continue to have some of these trips, I know Ms. Daisy, she'll be coming up next, but like last year, one of those things that she mentioned was, sometimes it can be difficult to get the number of people, so if this could help get the people, but if anybody, does anybody, if anybody has any questions?
Well, just, and on top of that, just reminding people that the students, you're not automatically approved to go, you do have to put in a letter of intent, your teachers have to recommend you, that sort of thing, so that if there is a student out there who wants to go, A, this might be a way to remind kids, hey, let's, let's do the right thing, but also, if for some reason you feel like a student wouldn't be comfortable or successful for themselves on the trip, they are not automatically going to have the ability to go anyway, so, yes.
Anybody have any questions about it? If not, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the policy update as written here.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Now, Ms. Daisy, I'm gonna pass it over to you.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for how many times I came last year, trying and trying and trying to pitch trips. I had no intention of standing here at this time of the year, because we pretty much decided it wasn't gonna work, we couldn't get the numbers, having sophomores might help, and we would move forward next year. And then I received an email from Mr. Scott, who received an email from somebody who teaches at Whitman Hansen, and they typically have taken two busloads of kids on their trips, and I did laugh a little when they said, "We only got 24," and I was like, "Oh, if we could get 24, we couldn't get 13." So, they were looking, and I said, "In an ideal world, if we could come up with 12, and therefore send two chaperones," Cara Howell approached me and said, "I'm interested in this," and the other one is a TBD, but I would always step in and fill that spot, and so it's, they're looking for 12. I talked to the man from Whitman Hansen, he said, "That would be great, that would be one bus, all the right chaperones, everything." They've already planned it, there was literally no work on our end this time. The downfall is that by doing it in September, which is really October, is that they're gonna have less time to pay, so the 4109, I'm not really sure why it's so specific, but 4109 is the price of this, and that means that it typically, so April, it's probably gonna have to be paid in full by February, which doesn't give a whole lot of time, but we've also had people who have paid in full immediately when they've done trips, so I don't know how much of a deterrent that will be. So, anyway, I figured if there's staff in the building who think this looks great, there is a little thing at the end of it, you may have looked over it, for a two-day extension to Vienna, that's not part of it, Whitman Hansen is stopping at the day nine in Budapest, and I basically am here to see if you would like to approve this one, and then I would reach back out to the Whitman Hansen person. And I'm not gonna do the thing we've done in the past, if I don't get 12, usually we've gone around, we've begged, "Andrew, please come to," you know, whatever, just, if, if we'll hold the meetings, we'll have the whole application process, and can I assume that sophomores are eligible for this one, since you just approved...
Yes, they are now. That's why we did that, that's why we did that in that order.
Thank you so much. So, maybe with three grades available, that we could get the 12 that we're looking for.
Okay.
Question? This is for April vacation.
April vacation. I do not have definitive dates. I know with EF tours in the past, you tell them you want April vacation, and then they're always a plus or minus two days, kind of a, but it would definitely be an overnight flight, well, I shouldn't say definitely, I would assume. Every Europe trip we've ever done has been overnight, so I would imagine the earliest we'd leave is Thursday night and miss one day of school.
Okay.
So, this is a joint trip, then?
Yes.
With Whitman Hansen?
Yes, and I think this could be the start of, like, a good, because in the past, we've been mixed with trips from people all over the country. We went with four people when Michelle and I went to Japan, and it could be kind of nice to have a local school that you can actually meet, and the kids can meet each other in that case.
And are we, like, the parameters for, say, roommates and things like that, are we going to...
I have asked EF that Abington stays with Abington.
Okay.
I mean, I would also suppose that we could address it if one of our students happens to be best friends with somebody from Whitman Hansen, I don't have a problem with it, but I think it is pretty nice when, that's always the, "I don't wanna stay in a room with them, I don't know them," and then it gets a little bit dicey sometimes, so, yes, EF has said they would accommodate that.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Daisy? I mean, we're giving the permission, if you don't get it, you don't get it, kind of thing, so...
Right.
I'm okay.
I will not be back until spring for next year.
She says right now.
Is everybody, you okay?
Yeah.
I'll be looking for a motion to approve the trip to Berlin, Prague, Krakow, and Budapest during April Vacation 2026, as presented by Ms. Daisy.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
All righty. Mr. McCurran, for out-of-state field trip to Washington DC.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to request approval for our Washington DC trip for grade eight. You should have all the information with you tonight, but I'll go through a few points. The trip dates will be June 4th to June 6th, that's a Thursday to Saturday. We're staying with Mars Tours and Travel, they're the company that we enlisted last year, they were very responsive when we needed them to be last year, and we're very happy that the price per student is actually $3 less than last year, which I'm not gonna ask why, I'm just gonna take that and say thank you, because we expected it to really go up. It's been rising every year with buses. All meals, transportation, admissions, and accommodations are covered. We'll be staying at La Quinta Suites by Wyndham in Manassas, Virginia, just outside the city. We'll maintain a 10 to 1 student to chaperone ratio, you know, overnight security at the hotel till 6:00 AM. Also happy to report, we really haven't needed that, but it'll be there in case we do. Our itinerary will include the Air and Space Museum, historic Civil War sites like Ben Lemond's house, the Vietnam and Korean War memorials, the Lincoln, FDR, and MLK memorial, Smithsonian museums, we'll have our choice of those to enter, a dinner cruise on the Potomac. There's a new exhibit called the People's White House, it takes place just down the street from the White House itself, so we'll go to the White House for a photo opportunity, and then we'll go see a presentation about the history of the building itself and what it's been used for, and then visiting the National Holocaust Museum before we leave. We did debate, shorter trip, longer trip, this trip in this price point feels right for Abington this year, so we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask Mr. McCurran.
Mr. McCurran, is it possible to leave earlier in the morning? Because I remember last year, the buses, there was that issue that they didn't come on time, and it delayed you, and you were unable to do some activities once you got...
Sure, there was one bus last year that did not come on time. We will not be contracting with that bus company in the future, we had a couple of issues with that particular bus. We are moving the departure time up by one hour, so instead of leaving at 6:00 AM, we'll leave at 5:00 AM. The reason we were late last year had more to do with traffic than with that one individual bus, so that one bus was later than the other two, but even the first two buses that did everything the way they should have, just traveling through major cities down the eastern seaboard, sometimes you, you have a little bit. So, in planning this year's itinerary, I was careful with our travel manager from Mars to include items that are on the path, which hopefully makes it more likely for us to be there. And again, one of the things that we liked about this company, as opposed to others, that Mr. Coyle and I had some experiences with a few years ago, they were very responsive. One phone call, they were rerouting us, they were redoing our itinerary, so I could get it out to everybody, it was, it was a good experience.
And then just one more. I don't know if you want to, I'm all for the Holocaust Museum and going to it, however, my experience when I went down there, I went with a friend, and there was a big school group that came in, and they didn't take it seriously, so it, I don't know if the kids are mature enough to...
So, there are curricular pieces that lead up to this, that will speak to that, and we also have a tradition in Abington of having a Holocaust survivor, Janet Applefield, come and speak to our students, so I share your concern, but I feel like we'll be able to impress upon our students the dignity that needs to be shown to that space.
Perfect.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. McCurran?
I like the itinerary, I think it looks great.
I know, I wanna go.
I really like the itinerary.
You can draw your name in the hat, you draw our, in public meeting.
Yeah, I didn't know it was an hour earlier, Matt, so that, that works out that it's an hour earlier too, because that was some feedback I did get as well.
Plenty of time to sleep on that, right?
If not, that's, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip to Washington DC for the Abington Middle School, grade eight students, from June 4th to 6th.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCurran.
Thank you.
Up next, Department Superintendent, Dr. Michelle, she's gonna go over her, her own, her goals for the school year 2025-2026.
Thank you. You all received in your packet a copy of my goals for the 25-26 school year. I just want to spend a couple of minutes talking about the intersection of my goals with the strategic plan, the goals of the principals, and then the goals of the teachers. So, all of my goals are tied to a portion of the strategic plan, not all of the portions of the strategic plan, but parts of the strategic plan. Then the principals take their, take my goals and the strategic plan, and they develop their own goals for the year. Dr. Vasta and I meet with all the principals and, and the director of the AEP, and talk about their goals and how they plan to accomplish their goals, and then the teachers get a copy of my goals, of the principal's goals, and then they write their own goals, all connected to their professional practice and student achievement. Those are the two areas of, of goals in, in the evaluation system. So, I had a couple of questions around the development of goals and the interplay of the strategic plan. You may not see every area of the strategic plan in one of my goals, even over the next five years. That doesn't mean that that work's not happening. That work is still happening because it's a district goal, and then there's a focus for me on different areas of the strategic plan. So, one of, the first goal is around student achievement, and that's collaborating with the district in building leadership to ensure our MCAS scores meet or exceed the state averages in ELA, math, science, and civics, and civics is a new area this year, and then focusing on the achievement gap for our subgroups and improving outcomes for all learners, so for trying to work to improve the achievement of the highest performers, to make them higher, the lower performance, lower performers to also improve their learning throughout the year. I know we'll have an MCAS presentation at the end of October to talk about the trends that we saw across the state this year and in Abington this year, so that'll be, and I haven't studied the, the scores yet, but I know that as a state, that there was some achievement loss this year, so. Success for all learners is another area, and in conjunction with the Director of Student Services and Dr. Vasta, implement inclusive instructional strategies and MTSS, multi-tier system of support, to support diverse learners and improve their outcomes. Last year, we had professional development around universal design for learning, and this year, we have a goal that 90% of the teachers will incorporate at least one UDL strategy in their planning by January. At Abington High School, we're conducting an equity audit, and those, that audit will inform the next steps at Abington High School, and then we'll move to our other schools as well. It's not, this year, we're focusing on Abington High School, that doesn't mean in future years, we won't look at other schools. My, one of my, I have two professional practice goals, my first, or is, or three, sorry, is to conduct at least two learning walks. We have found learning walks of our administrative team to be beneficial in the calibration of our observations, so as a group, we go into a building, we, smaller groups visit classrooms, and we come back and talk about what we saw, and it's non-evaluative for the teachers, but it's very helpful in the making sure we're all seeing the same things and talking about the same things and talking about, talking in the same language, if you will, and we try to do two in each building, and it is a priority for us, and we do, we do do two for each building. Sorry, I kinda spit that out. Communication, that was a big focus for us last year around Thrill Share, and that's gonna continue to be one of our, I think it'll always be a focus for us, because we can always do better in our communication, but we're taking it kind of the next step, and that's to make sure that our communication protocol with public safety is, is tight, and we actually had a meeting today on, on some of those communication protocols, and that we'll also conduct at least two drills each year, in conjunction with the Abington Police Department. We're looking to evaluate what we do and how we communicate by grade level, and we know that there is inconsistencies among grade levels, and among grade levels, and across grade levels, and we are looking to provide some consistency, and that's gonna be, that's gonna be a process, so our first is to really find out what everyone is doing. This year, we are happy that we're using one platform, so everyone is using rooms, and so that makes it so that a family who has three children are using three different platforms to try to get information from the schools. And my final goal is to... And my final goal is to participate in year two of the new superintendent induction program, or as I like to call it superintendent school. And that's attending monthly meetings and I have a coach that I also meet with regularly to talk about problems of practice and leadership. And that's been very beneficial.
Thank you. Is really, I'll ask a quick question. Is year two, is there only two years or is it?
There's three years.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Michelle on any goals? Go ahead, Caroline.
I do. For the, the success for all learners part, the, the UDL part, 90% of teachers incorporate at least one UDL strategy. How are things like that, like the, the goals, how are they monitored? Like by, by the building principals, by?
In conjunction with the building principal. In our walkthroughs, we hope to see the evidence of, of UDL through, and also getting data through our principals. And I do, and Dr. Basta also does walkthroughs and informal or less formal walkthroughs of the building that aren't our formal walkthroughs per se. So it's through observation.
Okay. And also with the, the learning walks, do you visit every classroom in the building or just a?
We do not.
Okay.
The principal prior to a learning walk, depending, we usually have, there's 13 district level administrators. And so we usually have three groups of, of principals and administrators. And we will typically visit four class, each group will visit four classrooms. So in a school like Woodsdale, we see most of the classrooms in the course of a year. And a building like the middle school, we don't see all the classrooms. The idea around our learning walk is really about trends, what we see for trends and to talk about teaching and learning.
Is there feedback given to the buildings?
There is.
And the teachers?
Yep. So Dr. Basta and the principal spearhead what we call back, call a feedback memo. And again, nothing but an individual teacher or an individual classroom, although I think every single principal says that after they send out the feedback memo, someone says, was that in my classroom? Or what did you see or what did you think? And the, the idea of, of the learning walk really is to be non-evaluative. So do we see something? And I'm going to give you example, one of the focus, two years ago in many of the buildings and the principals help identify what they're looking for was what is the second or third adult in the classroom doing? And so we wouldn't call out one classroom, we would call out a trend. Did we see, we saw the second adult in classrooms engaged with students working on individual work. Or a trend might have been, there needs to be more of a focus of the second adult working with individuals or small groups of students. Another area that we looked at was who's doing the majority of the talking in the classroom? Or as we call it, the, who's doing the heavy lift? Actually, Doc, I think that's Dr. Born's term, who's doing the heavy lift in the classroom? So what is the trend around that? In the four classrooms that I visited, three out of the four, the teacher was giving directions and then the student was doing the work as opposed to this, the teacher doing most of the work. And it's a snapshot in time, which is why we look at it as a trend. Is that?
Yes.
Anybody else have anything?
Quick question. Are we able to go on those walkers or just to see how they're done?
Yeah. I don't see why not. I don't see why not. You're also welcome to visit schools anyways. And if that's something you would like to do even outside of our learning walk, then that's just something you and I would set up and set up with the principal and visit classrooms. Can I just talk about the next step that we would also like to see as a district that teachers are visiting each other more and we are, we have a commitment to provide classroom coverage for teachers who would like to visit other classrooms. And, and I know, for example, Mr. Born this year has identified a number of topics and has said, okay, if anyone would like to go to Dr. Michelle's room to observe how she frames the lesson, she does that really well. And if that's something that you think would be helpful for you, let me know, give me a day's notice and I'll provide coverage for you to go and observe that teacher. And we, while we have a number of teachers who have taken an opportunity to visit other classrooms, that is something that culturally we would like to grow. We would like more teachers to, to feel comfortable having people in their room and also visiting other classrooms.
Anybody else have any questions for Dr. Michelle? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve Dr. Michelle's goals for this upcoming school year as presented by her just now.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep. Next, reporter, the Director of Finance and Operations, Ms. Sarah Gani. You should have a handout from her at your, at your desk.
Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
So tonight you should have a copy of our FY27 budget development and article planning schedule, which actually starts next month or tomorrow, which seems crazy, but it's true. As you know, town officials are anticipating a difficult budget year ahead in a possible override for the next fiscal year. So we will continue to work closely with town hall, with our administrators and with this committee to firstly determine a level funded budget. And then we will determine an override dollar amount to get to a level service budget. And that will need, for the school department, that will need to be completed by March 23rd of 2026. And town meeting is actually in May this year, May 4th, 2026. So unless there are any questions, would you consider a motion to approve our FY27 budget development and article planning schedule as outlined?
Anybody have any questions for Mrs. Gani?
I guess maybe just to clarify level funded, level service for anyone who might be watching.
Okay. Thank you. So a level funded budget means that you get the same dollar amount this, as you got this year, next year. So if our, I don't have the exact budget number, but if our budget is $30 million, then, then next year we will get $30 million. And we have, everyone has increases for the next fiscal year. Contractual increases, special education increases, transportation increases, utility increases. So whatever that increase is, you have to make up. That number of the increase, special education, transportation, utilities and contractual obligations, those things make up the level service budget. So the level service is you're taking the services that you have this year and replicating them to next year. And Sarah knows this. I've just said it so many times. I said, I'll take this if that's a question. So level service is exactly or close to what we have this year, next year. And level funded is the same amount of money next year, which means a cut.
So in no scenario that we're looking at at this point is elementary art moving from its current 45 minute block, whatever they get to more. Like we are not growing services in the current environment.
Correct.
As a result of the towns.
Typically, our January, early January school committee meeting, we present what we call a growth budget. We provide a budget that gets us additional services. And if you remember, there's usually a slide that says, and we'd really like to include all these other things because they would be really great for us, but here's what we really think we, we need. And then from that first January meeting through town meeting, we reduce. This year, because of the timeline, we anticipate, and this will be a decision of the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, but my recommendation will be that first January school committee meeting will be a level service budget, not a growth budget.
Anybody else have any questions for Ms. Gani? I'm just going to, I'm just going to point out that the, this is a pretty, this is pretty standard year to year. The one major difference is that us providing our proposed budget to the, to the town hall no later than March 23rd. So just to get this out there ahead of time, there will probably be another school committee meeting in the second week of March to kind of work on that where, because otherwise we're only going to have the two in January, one in February before that March 23rd meeting. Our March meeting's scheduled for after March 23rd right now. So just keep that in mind. We'll figure out the date that works, the date and time that works for everybody. But that is the biggest change to what is normally listed here. That and town meeting being pushed back about a month, give or take.
Yep.
From what it normally is into May. So with that said, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year 2027 budget development and article planning schedule as presented by Mrs. Gani.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, no problem. Let me just hit on this thing real quick. So really quick, just so everybody knows, so next school committee meeting date, next school meeting is going to be October, Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, but a 7:00 PM start. The National Honor Society induction is happening at 5:30 that evening in the auditorium. So we're going to start at 7 o'clock. That'll be the, right now that'll be the only time, time change of anything. The rest will go back to 6:30. But that'll be a 7:00 PM start on that Tuesday night. Informational items, I know Dr. Michelle has something she wanted to point out on them. So I'm going to pass it to her.
Thank you. Your first item under informational is the FY24 end of the year report audit findings. And I'm happy to say that Sarah completed her first end of the year report last year, although she always did a lot of work behind the scenes on the end of the airport, but last year was her first year taking it from A to Z. And here's the, the report here and you'll find that there's no substantive findings. So congratulations. Sarah?
Thanks.
You also have the Reed's Quarterly Report. There are the report of the resolutions. Where MASC will talk about.
So MASC, that was just so anybody look watching, the MASC delegate was on the agenda. I meant to sound passing over it for now just due to we have to figure out our schedule and see if it works for anybody. So I just wanted to, that was in the agenda. I just want to call that out now.
Thank you. So there's the resolutions for you to review. And then the last one I just want to highlight under informational is on Monday, September 22nd, over 250 of the Abington High School and Abington Middle School students participated in the Who We Play For, which provided free ECG screenings for students. Over 5,000, this was spearheaded by Peter Sharino and over $5,000 was donated by local community and organizations in memory of Jared Crowley, who is an Abington High School graduate. And I wanted to just thank a few people, Athletic Director Peter Sharino, Athletic Trainer Alicia Reed, Jane Coyle, Tara Testa, Joanne English, Susan Crowley, Megan Reed, Nancy McSherry and Alyssa McSherry for volunteering that day. I went by midday and there were a lot of students participating, a lot of students waiting. I don't know if Andrew, if you were, you were shaking your head, so I thought that you might've been. So a great baseline for our students and I just wanted to, to thank all of those that volunteered that day for such an important event.
Thank you. Yeah, Andrew, thank you to you and the rest of the students for taking advantage of it too. That's awesome. Thank you to everybody that Dr. Michelle mentioned. So some dates to remember, tomorrow, Wednesday, October 1st.
It's not the music parent meeting.
Okay.
That's actually on Thursday, October 2nd.
Okay. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October 1st is the CPAC meeting at 6:30 PM here in the library. I just sent an email on my way here. Thursday, October 2nd at 6:30 PM in the band room is the Abington Music Parents Meeting. Also on Thursday is the Beaverbrook PTO meeting in their cafeteria. Monday, October 6th is in-service early release day for students. Tuesday, October 7th, Woodsdale PTO meeting in their cafeteria at 7:00 PM. Wednesday, October 8th, Abington Education Foundation meeting in town hall, 6:00 PM in the Meyer Room. And then some parent teacher conferences are coming up. So Abington High School Parent Teacher Conference is going to take place the evening of October 9th from 5 to 7 and after school on Friday, October 10th from 11:45 to 2. So that'll be a half day for the high school only. Tuesday, October 14th is the middle school PTO meeting at the cafeteria here at 6:30 PM. And then on Thursday, October 16th and Friday, October 17th are the Beaverbrook Parent Teacher Conferences. Their evening is also 5 to 7. Their afternoon is 1 to 3:15. And again, they will have an early release day for Beaverbrook only. And lastly, on the following week, Thursday, October 23rd and Friday, October 24th, Woodsdale will have their parent teacher conferences, 5 to 7 on Thursday and 12:45 to 3 on Friday. And that will be an early release day for Woodsdale only. I think that's everything.
Do we know if the parents get an email like a week before to schedule?
I don't know how, how out they get them, but I know they get them.
Okay. So look for the.
I have not received a high school one yet and that's in nine days.
Oh, for conferences?
Yeah.
According to school council, that's going out tomorrow.
Okay. So yeah, eight days or so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Heidi. Yeah, check your emails to make those appointments. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add?
Oh, I, I know what I'd like to add. I would love to thank all the kids that participated in the COPS 5K. I just want to say that the track team like totally came out on top, top female, top male. And they also took like all the places for their age categories too. So congratulations to the track team. And we're going to try and do a competition next year for the other sports teams to see who could possibly win.
And the girls JV and varsity soccer teams showed up to.
Thank you. They did the water stations and they did a really good job. So thank you to them.
Thank you, Pam. That's a great one. And thank you to Melissa Copes, Melissa Cook and Abington COPS for, for putting that on last week. If there's nothing else, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn. Yeah, that too. A little motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.